Good evening. Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 2nd. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Holly to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you.
Our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda and submit.
I second.
We're good. A motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is statement and remarks from citizens. This is anything for anything not on the agenda for tonight. Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
Got one, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Last week I joined the meeting virtually and I was not here, but I wanted to say an appreciation to Adam and his staff and the whole group at the Water Resources Department for all the work that they put into updating those wastewater standards. It was a long, lengthy process. I did read them and review them and so I appreciate all the work that they did on that.
Thank you. Thank you. A couple announcements. So, County Veterans Memorial Foundation will host a Veteran Days program. That'll be on November the 11th at Veterans Park and that program will begin at 11:00 a.m. Also Parks and Recreation Department in Kipoe County Beautiful are partnering with the Athens Land Trust to host an invasive species plant removal workdays and those are start at 9:00 a.m. and go to 1:00 p.m. And that'll be on November 9th, November 23rd, and November 27th. Also, we still have some citizen board application peers that are still open. O'Conne County Farm Land Preservation Committee has two appointments. Library Advisory Board has two appointments. Board of Elections has two appointments. And O'Conne River Resource Conservation Development Council Board has one appointment. You can go to the website for applications and the deadline is Tuesday, November 9th at noon. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from October 5th and also October 26th for approval.
I make a motion to approve the field in 26 October. It's submitted.
Second.
We have motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is the recognition of Don Phillips and IMI and we're going to ask County Fire Marshal to come up and kind of tell us about what's going on with that and then we have a resolution that Commissioner Saxon will read for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, last year we did a addition to Fire Station Number Five, East O'Conne Fire Station, and along with that, we did a new water tank. We contracted with IMI for the support structure for the tank. And when we got down to the end, time to pay, Mr. Phillips said, "Don't worry about it. It's on me." So, it was, it was, we were very grateful for everything that he did. Him and his staff, just they really went out of the way. Even created a mechanism for turning the water on. So, they really did a great job. We'd really like to say thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and let Mark read the proclamation.
Whereas the O'Conne County Fire Rescue Department is an integral and vital part of the O'Conne County community, and whereas O'Conne County residents, volunteers, and businesses generally support public safety efforts throughout the county, and whereas the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners recently completed the expansion of the East O'Conne Fire Station in order to ensure superior facilities for fire protection, and whereas a new 10,000 gallon water supply tank for the East O'Conne Fire Station was deemed critically important to effective firefighting and operations as a mechanism to provide an adequate water supply for fire trucks, and whereas IMI Industrial Services Group under the director, under the direction of Don Phillips, graciously donated all materials and labor to provide a new 10,000 gallon water tank for the East O'Conne Fire Station at no cost to the county taxpayers. Now therefore be it resolved that the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners acknowledges and thanks Don Phillips and the entire staff of IMI Industrial Services Group for their generosity and supporting O'Conne County Fire Rescue in its mission to protect the lives and property of O'Conne County residents. Signed, Chairman John Daniel.
Thank you. We'll let Russ take that over and deliver that to them. Our next item is Task Commissioner Efficiency Study Agreement. Commissioner Riddle cannot be here tonight. We have an agreement. She's requested a efficiency study for her office and the study will be conducted by Change Partners. Part of the process will include a vendor meeting with the Task Commissioner, review scope process, and final reporting. Will be vendor meetings with the Task Commissioner's staff. Task Commissioner is to collect and report data to the vendor in a timely fashion. Additional items may be requested by the vendor as well. Board of Commissioners agree to provide funding for the study. Once the study is completed, Change Partners will produce a final report to both parties and the final report will be used to negotiate the next step in the process. Commissioner Riddle's read this. He's already signed it on her end, so we just need a motion and a vote to approve it on our end.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did you say when to start? Is that study to take?
That will start sometime the first quarter of next year.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll kind of depend on her workload.
There as well.
Well, I certainly would be happy to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the Efficiency Study Agreement for the Tax Commissioners Office.
Second.
We have motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Now, we'll move into the hearing and zoning actions. First item is rezone number P21-0156, Sapphire Properties LP. This is AG to AR and it's 4.42 acres located at 5031 Monroe Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P21-0156 located just off of Highway 78, Monroe Highway. This is the overall location map. Next one, this is the subject parcel and aerial. This current zoning is AG with suburban neighborhood as a character area. And again, the request is from AG to AR in order to subdivide into two single family residential lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets. Kind of enlargement of that representative architectural images. And the staff recommends approval, conditional approval, subject to the following conditions are, one standard condition and the commission recommends approval of those same conditions.
Now, we'll hear from the owner of the agent of the owner.
Good evening. I'm Brett Thurman. I live at 160 West Thompson Street, Bogart, Georgia, and I represent Rob Scott, Sapphire Properties, who owns the parcel here in question. This is a single family residential lot already. It's owned AG. We'd like to subdivide it into two so that you could place another house on its own lot. It would share an existing undeveloped driveway that's there right now. It's aligned with the curb cut, or excuse me, the median cut that's there in Highway 78. So, we're not creating any kind of safe condition nor do we have to really go back. We don't, we won't have to go back to GDOC to deal with an additional driveway. It's a, we're going, the houses will be constructed, you know, according to O'Conne County standards and we believe it'll be a good improvement on the property. The house itself is a little rundown and Rob's going to put some money into that to bring it back up to a much better property and then build another one right next to it. So, we think it'll be a great improvement and we hope you would agree with us and vote to rezone this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to speak tonight?
Rob Scott. I live at 1457 Route Jackson Road, Bogart, Georgia, and I just wanted to, you saw the type of houses we're going to build, which is for that area probably better than most of the houses in that area. So, we're just trying to build a modest but nice house in that area.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezone? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against the rezone? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up questions from commissioners. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve rezone P21-0156 Sapphire Properties LP, AG to AR, plus minus 4.4 acres, 5031 Monroe Highway Residential with the one condition.
Second.
Here we have a motion second to approve rezone P21-0156 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is rezone for Ms. Rosemary Franklin. This is 15 acres located at 2601 Snowsmill Road. This will encompass rezone P21-0167, variance P1, P21-0168, and variance P21-0169.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is the location map for rezone P21-0167 and the two associated variances. This is the aerial photograph of the tax parcel, Snowsmill, the upper left. It's currently zoned AG in the rural places, character area. And again, the request is to go from AG to AR in order to subdivide into three single family residential lots. And then the variance request is accompanying the special exception variance is P21-0169 to allow vehicular access to an existing street outside of the subdivision. And then hardship variance P21-0168 to reduce the required width of the private access. This is the concept plans in your packets. Notice the two smaller lots up front with the 10 acre remaining at the back and the private access drive with cul-de-sac that is proposed to be constructed. These are the architectural representative images. And staff recommends conditional approval with the two conditions. They want our standard condition and the two, no further subdividing. That's what we committed on the property. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to conditions recommended by staff. And then as far as the variances go, the hardship variance P21-0168, staff does believe this request meets all necessary conditions to grant the special exception with the one condition. Then the special exception hardship, the special exception variance P21-0169, again, staff believes this does meet all necessary conditions to grant special exception variance with the one condition.
Thank you. Frank Pittman?
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman. I live at 1400 Saxon Road, Watkinsville. I'm here representing Darren Britt, who is, is not the current owner but has the property under contract to purchase. I want to give you guys a little bit of background information on the property. So, it's 15 acres, zoned AG today. That allows, that allows them to subdivide this into three lots today without, without a rezone, without any of these variances. The, the reason for this request is because there's a lot of floodplain on the property. There's some bad topography in areas. So, we're just trying to adjust where those three lots go and to do that, we've got, two of those lots have to be under five acres. And so that requires you go to AR. Once you, once you rezone it, then that kicks these variances in because then it's a major subdivision, which, which doesn't allow, they're supposed to come off the road and that kind of stuff. So, we're not asked for anything he's not allowed to do today. We're just really trying to shift lots around to use the better land and looking at that. So, so there's no increase in loud density over today. We, we just, we just want to use better, better, better property. There is an existing house on it, which would remain on one of the lots. That kind of dictated a little bit too where the, where the lot lines would have to go. And looking around there, you know, there, even though this is kind of the rural area, it's around the county line on the river, there, there are 22 other lots that are less than three acres with, within two thirds of a mile of this. So, it's not, we're not asking for something that, that is uncommon in that area. So, with that, I would, I'll leave it open to any questions and ask for you guys' approval on these items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezone or the variance request? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against the rezone or the variance request? Anyone virtually? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and open up to any questions from commissioners.
I've got a couple. If Guy could go back to the concept. My question has to do with the, make sure I understand the, how the county handles floodplain. The dotted line is the, that's the 100 year floodplain?
Yes.
The heavy one. And that's, that's determined by FEMA?
Yes.
Now, what is our responsibility as a county, as our inspection department, to make sure nothing is built within that floodplain?
We would not permit any new structures in that floodplain.
I understand that. But how do we make sure that they don't build in that floodplain? Does our inspectors pull the tape?
No. Oh, no. A site plan is submitted with all of our building permits. That would show that floodplain and show the building outside of the floodplain.
But our, but as far as being on the ground, our inspectors would make sure that it's not built within the floodplain?
Our inspectors would make sure that it's built per the plan that was approved with the building permit and that would be out of the floodplain.
Okay. Now, the second question has to do, are these considered like state waters? Is there a state buffer for?
There is.
Remind me, is it 25 feet or 50?
Those are shown on this site plan as well. Those are the dashed lines. And so, the state is 25 foot.
Now, who monitors that for the state? Does the state or do we?
We do.
We do? Okay. And that's in addition to the floodplain? I mean, as far as?
Well, it's contained within that. Yes.
What's the restrictions on that 25 foot buffer?
Undisturbed.
Okay.
Any other questions? With that, we'll open up for a motion on the rezone 21-0167.
I make a motion to approve P21-0167 with the two conditions.
Second.
A motion is second to approve rezone P21-0167 with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Now, we'll entertain a motion for variance P21-0168.
I make a motion to approve variance P21-0168, Rosemary Franklin to reduce the width of private, it's just easement, plus minus 15 acres with the one condition.
Second.
We have a motion is second to approve variance P21-0168 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries.
I guess I'll make the motion to approve variance P21-0169 for Rosemary Franklin to allow vehicular access to an existing street outside the subdivision, 2601 Snowsmill Road, with conditions.
Second.
Good. A motion is second to approve variance P21-0169 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Now, we're moving to countywide measures. First item is discuss and consider a potential broadband agreement. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As we discussed last week, we are proposing entering into an agreement with Charter to build out the unserved portions of the county. Just briefly to recap, this is primarily the south and the western portion of the county. There's two areas we're really talking about here. An area defined by the Department of Community Affairs as unserved. And then there's the additional area that is defined as the Ardoff area, which is the regional, regional digital essentially area that Charter has received federal funding to build out. And the reason the agreement with Charter makes a lot of sense for the county is they have the federal funding and so they'll be deploying resources there. So, they work, and I believe their term was a synergistic build. And so, with this, what we're talking about is in the unserved area, approximately 1377 unserved addresses. As part of the agreement, it would, it would go field verify all of these and then additional almost 800 addresses. We're talking about approximately 2,200 currently, current addresses not receiving broadband right now that would be built out as part of this. The Ardoff area would be previously scheduled for 2020. So, they've agreed to move that up to the front of the line or the others. What this does is allows us to get ahead of a lot of the state funding for all the various broadband projects and we're looking at approximately a two-year completion of this. The way this is structured right now is between 1.3 million and 1.7 million dollars. And the reason there's some variability is we've added accelerator clause bonus. If Charter connects the address within calendar year 2022, there's an additional 200. Otherwise, it's a $1,000 per connection. So, the funding for this would, would come from the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds, which are designated for COVID relief or either broadband or sewer connections. And so, this lines up directly with some of the funding that we previously didn't have two years ago. We have now. And so we can redeploy this toward the broadband. This is a fiber build with available speeds up to one gig for the, for these addresses. The way the funding would work is follow, we would issue a initial 50%, approximately $688,000. Once they hit their 1,000th address passed, we get the second payment going forward. So, the action before, and as part of it also in conjunction with Charter, we'll be setting up a portal for those who wish to receive it, even if they may not necessarily be within the address, just to identify addresses requesting the broadband service going forward. The contract is also structured so it can be scaled up in the future so that if we wish to go outside of the area in conjunction with Charter, we have some, some ability to do some amendments just going forward. Again, taking advantage with a partner. Charter has been very active the previous two months, two years within the area, building out some areas. Lake Creek comes to as an example, but in moving forward. And so, there's someone who's local in the area, even though they're a very large company. And then this makes sense from a scale perspective. So, the action before you, we've requested you approve the agreement with Charter for the broadband along with the necessary budget amendments to allocate the ARPA fund up to 1.7 billion dollars for the broadband project. Happy answering. Questions you have?
Any questions for commissioners?
I had a question answered at our agenda sitting meeting, but it did have something that come to mind about how this compares to our previous attempt. Is this a little cleaner deal or is it a little more, I mean, does it have a better timetable? I mean, what's?
Yeah. So, I think I was very clear from the beginning. I did not want to get into the operational side of broadband or even the partnership. So, the previous arrangement contemplated was a $4.5 million county contribution towards it with a 20-year, essentially a P3 partnership. This is more of a direct contract payment. Essentially, we are a, we are a grant award. They are a grantee scenario. And so, this is a payment they connected in O'Conne County is out of the broadband business. And those who know how to run the broadband business will be running broadband at that point.
So, that was my next question. Once we make the contractual payment to Charter, then our obligation ends?
That is correct.
But they have to, to get that service to that house?
That is correct. Yeah, we, the, the county will, yeah, I mean, it is essentially a grant relationship with Charter where we are going to subsidize a portion of their, to the portion of the county that don't make economic sense without some subsidy to, to build out. And then once that's done, then the county can step back and the telecoms who know how to do this sort of.
Now, at our last meeting, there was a question, I assume Commissioner Sykes and asked about the expense if it goes, I think, part of the contract. They'll take it so far down a long driveway, but after that, it becomes an expense of the home loan?
That's correct. So, they'll go about, they actually said they're up to 1,300 feet from back of curb. If you live a mile off the house, see, there's another four ways to go. But yeah, it's five to six dollars a leg or foot at that point. But the typical contract that we've seen is about 300 from the curb. So, to go to 1,300 is a pretty substantial amount.
Along that line, since you're talking about the service to the house, you know if that will be fiber or is that going to be copper?
It's a different fiber build.
So, it'd be fiber all the way to the house? The other thing is, as far as the route, do we have any idea which routes are gonna, I know there, I'm assuming this goes all the way to the county line. And so, is that going to go, you know, all the way down to Green County, down 15 or?
It will. It, so, the first 90 days, I'll make the call tonight, similar approval. And so, they'll take 90 days and feel truth, everything, make sure that, you know, the addresses that are there will be supported. But, and they indicated they, they're going to start with the Ardoff area, which would be southernmost portion within that. But yes, it goes all the way to the county line at Green County, the 15th Ward or major roads down there. The beauty of this too, this, these 2,200 addresses represent the most challenging addresses in the county to get. Once complete, we'll have a very, there's a few that, there's no mountain top in O'Conne County, but there, there might be some. We have some additional funds. We still have the 4.5 million SPOSS 21 coming up. So, we have to redeploy a little bit more to kind of finish off, add on to this, or you can look at a different, we're not bound by disagreement by that point once this is completed also.
Any other questions? It's exciting. It's been on our list for quite a long time. It's been a very complicated process and we've taken, taken a lot of swings at different malls coming across. Now, this is a good deal for the county. It's going to be a lot quicker as far as timeline. And best part is you don't get calls on Friday night that there's somebody's cables out. So... Do we have any public comment on this item? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the broadband, potential broadband agreement and with budget amendments as well.
Second.
Here we have a motion is second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is ratification of O'Conne County Library Architect Agreement. This is a standard architectural agreement. We did the same thing with Bogart. We tried to help the library system out with their construction projects. And this is one thing. Daniel's reviewed. Everything's in order. We just need a permission from me to sign that document so they can get rolling on design of the new Watkinsville branch. Any questions? Any public comment? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the ratification of the O'Conne County Library Architectural Agreement. Second.
We have a motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed? Does any Commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent agenda? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion second. All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. We do need an executive session in reference to land acquisition and litigation.
Make a motion. We adjourn into the executive session for land acquisition. Litigation.
We have a motion and second. All in favor? Thank you, motion carry.
I'll present it.
We have a motion and second. Go back in regular session. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Daniel?
We need a motion to extend the temporary construction period for a period of twenty-four months in the matter of condemnation of property owned by Dickens Farms, Inc. Consisting of seventy-four thousand four hundred sixty-six square feet of permanent utility easement and seventy-three thousand eight hundred ninety-one square feet of temporary construction easement and twelve thousand two hundred forty-two square feet of access.
That's only twelve months, right? Or is that extended for twelve months?
So moved.
Hold on just a second.
First Chairman, I need your request to be refused.
Very good. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the present, as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. With that, Commissioner Saxon.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We're done.